Hi.
Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 19th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Vice Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
All right. Please stand here for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emily, Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us. And, excuse me, I'll be taking my text hour, Psalms 117, 1 and 2. Oh, praise the Lord, all you nations, praise him, all ye people, for his mercy. Merciful kindness is great towards us, and the truth of the Lord endures forever. Praise you, the Lord. Lord Jesus, we praise you this day for everything you do for us. And, Lord God, we just thank you and praise you for everything. You're so good to us. You said you'd never leave us or forsake us. You stick us close to your brother. I know that to be true. No matter what we're going through, you're there with us. And you answer our prayers. And, Lord God, you give your son for us, so we have forgiveness of our sins. And we just praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pastor Chesprin.
Any correspondence or organizational business today? Any public comment today? All right. The consent agenda today consists of the minutes from the meeting on July 12th, and claim vouchers in the amount of $805,166.27.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right. We only have two items to visit today. The first one is to consider approving tire bid number 2, 3, and 6 to Heartland Tire of Kansas City in the amount of $14,431.60. Tire bid number 4 to Pomp's Tire Service in the amount of $3,762.84. And tire bids number 1 and 5 to Commercial Tire Center in the amount of $38,659.79. David Lee is not here. Are you?
I'm happy to step in. This item really speaks for itself. You do it fairly frequently. David did a good job of putting the winning bids down right here. Jeff and Kirk are here to discuss any questions you may have. Jeff did tell me before the meeting he really wanted to talk about the bridge stones, so happy to let him up here. But, but, in all seriousness, unless you have questions, this is a really straightforward item, so.
Here's another one of those items that we, when you need them, you need them. And ask for this lowest bid, and you take what you get, so. All right, so.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
All right. And then our second item is to review the summary of the 2024 budget to be published. And Janet Paddock is going to walk us through this.
Okay, Commissioners. I gave you a copy there. You have at your seat. Also, the summary was attached to the agenda. Derek and I have gone over all of this. We've reviewed all of our actuals from last year and put this together for you. We think that it's possible and it's fiscally responsible that we are able to stay revenue neutral this year, which is 49.513 mils. It does take our general fund down a bit, but we did redistribute some of that. As you know, Kristy has been in here and told us her revenues are down, so we did put some more revenue into the ambulance budget for next year, hoping that'll bounce back and we'll get that back next year and put that back in the general fund. Also, for road and bridge, with the Old 50 Project coming up, we did allocate some additional funds over there to road and bridge to make sure that there was enough funding there in road and bridge for that. So you can see the two changes in those funds. Again, the following year, we won't likely need that for the Old 50 Project, so we would reallocate that back. So just some adjustments this year to make sure that we're funding these other departments that needed additional funding when we had some money available. So as you guys know, and we talked about last week, and we've talked about repeatedly during the budget process, obviously, the bond defeesance saved us quite a bit of money when you guys took care of that last year with the ARPA funds. We're going to come out about a little over $200,000 ahead there that we're not spending in debt service. So that's a, was a huge step for our budget. And as mentioned last week, also, the juvenile detention center, although it was a hard decision, that is a big savings that we're seeing there, that we're able to do this. Derek mentioned it last week, and I think it warrants mentioning it again. While we can do that this year, this probably isn't going to happen multiple years. So we've still got projects on the table, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of all of those things. So while we can do it this year, we'll see what next year holds for us.
I think that this is a good budget. One of the things that we always have to balance is the well-being of our employees and thus the quality of services that we're able to provide, but also being fiscally responsible with the tax dollar. While this is revenue neutral, we do not feel like we had to unnecessarily cut corners to get there. We're still able to put some money in reserves through this budget. Just real happy with where it came together. For perspective, the mil this year is 53.78, dropping to 49.5 is obviously over a four-mil decrease. Janet and I started doing this back in 17, and in 17, the mil was 62.9. So over that seven years, if you elect to stay revenue neutral, the mil will have dropped 13.4 mils in seven years, so almost two mils a year. Don't have it with me today, but I am asking Janet to go back and see when the last time the mil in Franklin County was 49.5. And it's been, I suspect, decades. So that's something we're proud of. And again, I can't say it enough, and I hope my employees who are listening hear this, we're not, we are not leaving them shorthanded here. Like, we, our department heads did a great job. We've made sure that they have what they need, and we're just really happy with this. So I would emphatically encourage you to go ahead and declare that we can stay revenue neutral this year.
I would also just say, you guys have the budget book that we provided to you during the budget study sessions. I would encourage you to go through and look at those and see that we have accounted for all of that money in this. We're taking care of, like Derek said, all of our employees, all of the raises that we showed you in the budgets when we discussed those with you. That's all in there. We've made provisions in here for changes to how we're going to structure funding motor graders, which is something you guys had asked us to look at, and so that's absolutely accounted for in here. So just, all of our department heads pitching in and really watching every penny has really helped us get to this point this year.
What, did we end up on motor graders, just pay cash as they come up? Is that what we settled on?
We're trying.
We're going to work that direction.
That's what we're planning on, okay.
So we're working toward.
Yep.
Yep.
We're starting the process, putting money in place this year so that we can get there. Yeah, for sure.
Make sure that's what we landed on. I know we kind of.
Yeah. Got 2.5% merit increases and a 1.6% COLA, which is the same that we did in '23. So 4.1% overall wage increase, provided you earn your merit.
Nationally, month to month, from the previous year, wages are 3, 4, right around there. So that kind of just basically keeps up with, from sliding backwards. Just sad you put that much money towards it, you don't get ahead, but better than falling backwards, I guess.
Before we move forward with this motion, do we need to actually talk about the date?
Yes, you definitely do. What I have put in here right now is August 9th. That was consistent with where we had been when we were holding meetings in August. You can certainly go up to as late as the 20th if you want to do that. I haven't encouraged you to not go too mu, you could go a week earlier than that, but I wouldn't encourage that just because of the publication in the newspaper. I believe we'll get this in to get it published for next week's newspaper. But, you know, with it only being published once a week, I want to make sure that we have time to get this in if something happens, and so.
I see our valuations have gone up about $60 million in the last three years. So that's, that shows that we're growing as a county to have valuations grow, increase that much.
Yeah, and I didn't print the neighborhood revitalization, but we have so many properties in the neighborhood revitalization program right now. And I believe it's just over $3 million that we're returning through that program to those taxpayers. I mean, it is, it is a chunk. And those taxpayers, while they're going to get those rebates for anywhere from five to 10 years, I mean, when those are, when those are back, that's a lot of revenue there that we're basically forgiving right now to encourage growth. So that's, that's a lot of that, Roy. So hopefully, we continue to see the growth. Other counties aren't, aren't as fortunate to see, I mean, while values have increased, we've seen a lot of just straight new housing, new businesses, so.
The Walmart DC also doing a major upgrade this year that we will reflect it on next year, so.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I really haven't talked to Jamie about that to know what that looks like yet.
All right. Has everybody checked their calendars? I'm hoping that you all have. So if you are wanting to move forward with the revenue neutral rate, then an affirmative motion would be as follows. I make a motion to set a public hearing for the 2024 budget on Wednesday, August 9th at 6:00 PM, and authorize the county clerk to publish the budget in the auto herald not to exceed an estimated mil rate of 49.513.
Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I'll apologize in advance, because I'm going to say this at our budget hearing too, and I'll probably say it after our budget hearing. But 13.4 mils in seven years, that in and of itself is a tremendous accomplishment. But when you look at what this organization's been able to do in that time period, our facilities are in better shape than they've ever been in. Our technology is in the process of being upgraded and is in better shape than it's ever been in. Our workforce is more talented and productive than it's ever been. I struggle to find a measure where Franklin County isn't faring very, very well. And that is a testament to everyone associated with this organization. The five of you for giving us leeway to incorporate our vision. The leadership team for continuing to work hard to motivate their employees and find efficiencies. And then our workforce for showing up every day and performing their job at a high level. So appreciate the five of you, appreciate our employees. This is, this is something that I'm really proud of, so thank you.
Kristy.
Good morning. I just wanted to share a bit of good news with you all. Last week, I found out that we were awarded the 2023 Mission Lifeline from American Heart Association. We got the gold award. This was the highest level of award that we could get for a Mission Lifeline. And this really talks about, or speaks well to the technicians that are there on the street, because they're the ones that actually made this happen. And just for reference, what Mission Lifeline is, give me a second to put on my glasses. It is the American Heart Association's national initiative to advance systems of care for patients with high-risk, time-sensitive disease states such as severe heart attacks and stroke. This program helps reduce barriers to prompt treatment, starting from when 911 is called, to transport and continuing through hospital treatment and discharge. There's optimal metrics that we have to meet for heart attack and stroke patients. And we adhere to all of these evidence-based guidelines each quarter for the past two years. So that's just really, I think, speaks volumes to the talent of our paramedics and EMTs and advanced EMTs that they're able to do this. With stroke, what we were looking at was we want to give a pre-arrival alert to the hospital that we're coming in with a possible stroke so that they can prepare. We need to document the last time they were known well, because based off of timeframe, they can get certain medications, or they may not be a candidate. Also, their blood sugar levels have to be evaluated, because that goes back to being able to give them specific medications or not. And then we performed and documented a stroke screen in the field. For our heart attack patients, we did a 12-lead EKG, which is basically just what it says. It looks at 12 views of the heart. But we did that within 10 minutes of coming in contact with the patient. We made sure they were given aspirin. As you know, that helps thin your blood and reduce clots. And then we gave a pre-arrival notification that we were coming in with a heart attack within 10 minutes of finding that they were in fact having a heart attack. So we did that for our patients every quarter for the past two years. So I just wanted to share that with you. I think it's quite an achievement.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We talked last week about, when we were at the groundbreaking, that, you know, when you call 911, you actually get somebody.
Sure.
And you actually get somebody to show up, and when they show up, they know what they're doing.
Absolutely.
So it really is a great, great day to live in Franklin County.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
While you're up here, Kristy, and I suspect Don will maybe touch on this too, but that was a nice, nice event we had. It's not meant to be the formal one. When the building actually opens, as we talked about, we'll have an official opening. We'll have the media there. We'll let the community tour it. But for what it was, I thought that was great. I was glad that everyone had the opportunity to speak. It just turned into a really nice event.
Yes, it did. Thank you for making it happen.
Very cool.
Thanks, Kristy.
Thank you.
Ian, before you move on, I need to pull this back. In front of you, you all have another community partner request from United Way. You may recall during our community partner presentations, and Janet, please jump in, or Ian, for that matter. I believe it was you that brought up United Way making this request for funds for their 2-on-1 line. That's what this is. The amount is $813. It's not something that we feel like we can't do, but certainly, so I would be happy to do this, but want feedback and formal approval from the five of you.
I'll just give a little bit of background, because when she gets the phone call, and she gets a lot, these, they're looking, most of them are looking for help or they need assistance. And by her doing this, it keeps phone calls out of a lot of our county, from a lot of our county agencies, although sometimes it ends up going back to the county agencies. But there's a lot of, it really serves a lot of people in Franklin County. So, and that's all she even ever asked for, was if we would just pay for the phone every month, that that would be a big, a big help, so anyway.
I don't mind helping. We just need to be careful of what we've done in the past. But they do allocate funds to the same people we allocate funds to, so it's a double deal. I mean, this is not a big amount. I understand that. And it's right out of the drawer. I understand that. Just we need to keep it in mind. If it's going to come back again, remember, make it bear. We need to remember, we need to listen to who they support, because I'm sure over half the people they support are people we already support in one way or another. And that's kind of what we run into with a couple of the things. But I don't mind helping them.
And I think that, I think that's why she only asked for the telephone, was because that's not supporting any certain agency. You know, the money they give to support, she, that's why she's only asking for the phone.
And I remember having this conversation a little bit when it was brought up, and kind of the same lines as Dawn. All those other agencies do good things, whether we support them or not. And this is a fine use, but at some point, what is the goal of community partner funding? I mean, we can't, you know, like say there's, how many other agencies do they fund that all do, and that they don't, that do good things in the community? Ultimately, you know, we're setting a precedent. What's the goal of using tax dollars to do good in the community? I mean, the uses are endless, I guess. So I guess from a policy standpoint, what is our goal? And we are setting a precedent when we do this. I think we need to be cognizant of that. It's not, not that this isn't a good use, but.
And probably, you know, if they, if this year they ask again, so, I mean.
And we'll be giving, doing this every year.
Remember that, yeah. So it's really all up to you.
I think this is a great discussion. I think you framed it well. And to be clear, from a staff perspective, I just want you to know financially, we can do this. Whether or not you feel it's a prudent decision for the reasons that both Don and Colt discussed, I think is a great point. Just need feedback from the five of you.
It feels really good to give away other people's money. That's what we do when we choose to fund things like this, but it's slippery slope we need to be.
Is this something you really need, I mean, that we want to move forward on the decision?
I don't know that you have to move forward on the decision this very moment. I don't think I'm ready.
Okay. So we want to bring this back up. Everybody think about it, talk about it, read through the application, because it kind of does explain where the 2-on-1 calls are, and we can read, circle around next week.
They took the time to fill all this out. I'd like to read it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Very good.
All right.
You can do that. You're welcome.
All right. Chair.
Good morning. It's fair season. We survived the Richmond Fair this last weekend. The weather helped out great on Friday night, kept it nice and cool, and that didn't sustain through Saturday. But had a pretty good turnout, and things went off pretty well down there. County Fair this weekend, or starting now this week. So I'd encourage each of you guys to stop by our table while we're out there. We'll be with Kristy's crew as well out there at the. So just please stop by and say hi. We encourage that and get some water, because being hydrated is going to be very important. Well, I talked previously that when we started the SRO program down at Central Heights, that there were some other school districts that were looking to us for that as well. Last night, the West Franklin School Board approved to add an SRO there. It's the same situation as with Central Heights, that it would be fully funded. They understand that with our staffing the way it is right now, we are, it's going to be almost impossible to get someone there at the start of the school year. But we're, we're working through that process. That's just, but that is their desire. We just, school boards, the way that their budgets work and the way their meetings are and things, we don't always get too much lead time on, to know when those things are. That's why I'm bringing it up now, because it just happened. And we didn't have, we didn't really know where they were going to, where they were going to land on that. So it'll be a similar, similar situation as what we have at Central Heights, where, again, where they do fund all of that. We've been doing some training this week. Yesterday and tomorrow, we're training out at West Franklin High School, doing some scenario-based training with some active shooter-type situation and things like that there in their school. So we're out in the community doing, doing those things as well. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is that the 2022 Crime Index Report is out. I've been going through those numbers, crunching those, comparing where we are with our crime rates per thousand, comparing that with our call volume and things like that. And I'm working on getting my report completely finalized. I'll get with Derek and go with that, provide that to him, go over that with him. And if he feels that it's appropriate to come to you guys, I'm happy to present that. But I will tell you that per capita, our crime rate compared to the state is, is much lower than, than what the average is across the state of Kansas. So something to be proud of, that we live in a community that, that looks out for each other and takes care, you know, takes care of each other. So that's really all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
I just, we'll make one comment. A couple of us went to the Lunch On Us that's sponsored by the Health Department.
Yes.
Probably did a great job yesterday.
Great, thank you.
Presenting. I know it kind of condensed eight hours' worth into an hour, but, but it was, it was a good presentation, so. Very, very good.
Good. And we're, we're willing to take that show on the road. It's important for lots of groups of people need to understand the things they look for with mental health and how to help others that may be in crisis or headed to crisis. And so that's the purpose of that, of that training. So I appreciate the kind words from Riley. I know he enjoys doing it, and he does do a great job, so thank you.
I mean, if we can take away the stigma of mental health, I mean, it would go a long way.
Correct.
To, letting people get help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make the same comment. I attended it too. Officer Rivers put on a great presentation for cramming it all in a short period of time. But he, he kept everybody's attention, and it's one of them, it's hard to keep people's attention alive, stuff like that. But he did a good job, and he made it entertaining, go along with the seriousness of it. He made it to where people felt, everybody there felt comfortable with his presentation. And this one comment on him, he did a great job.
Great, thank you.
Representative, our county law.
Jeff? First, it gets a scam call. What's the process for a scam call?
Oh, it depends on the type of scam, but most organizations don't ask, aren't going to ask for credit card and social security number information over the phone. Be aware of the fact that there are a lot of scams out there. One that's, has, that is being focused on right now, because schools getting ready to start back up on college campuses. There will be people that will spoof the phone numbers from the college that somebody's attending and say that they are the campus police, and they will be asking for bond money for someone that is unable to call because they're incarcerated. And sometimes people provide, provide that credit card information, and they're giving, they're getting money out of people. Just know that that's not the way that things work. We've had it in the past where someone has called, said that they were deputy, and gave a name with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and that because of tax warrants, that there was, you know, someone was going to be there to arrest them unless they took care of that right now. That's not how we operate. That's not, that's not how that goes. But there are a lot of scams out there. We just tell people. We just tell people to be very cautious. Most organizations will tell you that they don't ask for solicitation over the phone, and so when people are calling, asking for solicitations over the phone, lots of times those are scams as well. So, we would just tell people, don't give your credit card information out, don't give your social security information out. If those organizations, if those groups need that, they likely have that already. It works in the mortgage industry as well, where they try to, can you verify your social? Give me your social type thing so that you can refinance, and unfortunately, a lot of people fall prey to, to those scams.
You pass it on like to the Attorney General?
We do. There's a consumer fraud unit up at the Attorney General's office. They are difficult to track down, and oftentimes, they have an international nexus. And so, that, they, getting someone prosecuted on those is, is very difficult. Also, getting, people always get, don't always get their money back. Most of the time, they do not get their money back. Publishers Clearing House is a, is one right now that somebody, people are calling saying that, that they want a car through Publishers Clearing House. However, you need to pay these fees upfront so we can deliver it. That's not how those things work. And unfortunately, there are people in the area who have, who will continually pay money out to some of these people, and so it's unfortunate, but we caution people again, you know, take care of your information.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Dustin, anything from you? All right. Janet? All right. Dawn?
Yeah, I, as a lot of you did, we all attended, as long as I've attended the groundbreaking up at Wellsville the other day, and one of them, it was impressive, and it was good. And I was impressed, the, the police chief gave some of us a tour of the new facility there, the police chief's office up there, and it is really, really nice and really modern. You know, I think it's gonna help them attract, I mean, it's something good to, when you're bringing in people, to interview what kinda nice facility you have, and plus also be able to tell them right next door, it's gonna be another nice facility with the ambulance service built right onto it, so, I appreciate everybody that, that, that put that together. Kristi's department and administration did a great job of putting that on. Did go to Wellsville meeting, the last one I went to. Main thing was that they've put on a second employee in their building inspections up there, and I think they have plans to build bigger plans in later time. But there is so much growth going on right now. I think they wanna be prepared, and they have, have hired a second gentleman. He's gonna be doing more than just building inspections, but they wanna get him in there and get him trained in, in the way they do things and the way things happen. They had a long discussion over their budget, and they set up another date to, for them all to get together, have budget discussions just like we do, you know, when we go over everything, with the person that does the work, just like the clerk that's here. And they talked about, there's a library, they're, they're getting ready to expand on it, and they're running the same things we're running there with the ambulance deal. It's taking so long, so much time, so much unplanned. The, the cost keeps going up, and they just keep running the same, he doesn't know what's gonna happen, and it happened. But I just think it'll all work out, and they'll have a nice new budget plan going on, and they'll have a lot of things, and that's all I got.
Well, I went to the big RV out there on ice and air and six, or I-35 and 68, the new...
Fun Town.
Fun Town RV Center, 50 acres covered with RVs of all different kinds, and they have their big open house and ribbon cutting there last Friday, and pretty amazing place. I talked to the manager, they're gonna have like three, three to 400 units on that property eventually, so, need anything, need an RV or need it fixed or anything, that kinda camp, they, they can handle it, so, pretty impressive. Like Dawn said, I thought that was a nice ceremony out, out at the new ambulance, where the new ambulance is gonna go there in Wellsville. A good fit with the police department right there, so it's moving around. Went to E-CAP meeting last night, and we went over the audit, and we had a clean, cleaner board for the audit, and that's about it.
Nothing I need to take up time with?
All right. Last Thursday, I went to the bold meeting of the SCDC, finally approved by all changes that I've been working on. Basically, it's less meetings and hopefully making the meetings that we do have more, have more meet to them, give more information. Then I did go to the Fun Town RV, kinda disappointed they didn't let us jump in the bouncy house, but when you have a big organization like that, that is nationwide, can buy units, I think, cheaper and sell them, so, I think they actually sold an RV during, from that chamber copy that they had on Friday. Went to the Chamber Copy at Cornerstones of Care, which basically works with the state, and I always call it SRS, it's not that anymore, but they work with children, trying to, trying to keep children in the home when they can, so they work for families and children, trying to not have to take that last step to move children out of the home. And went to the groundbreaking, hopefully, that by the time we get that ambulance station out there, they'll have the bridge done so that we could actually, because right now, you almost can't get there from here because you have to go around, but when they get the bridge done, they'll get the road done, and they'll be right off of K-33 Highway, so, response times will be awesome. The city of Ottawa, their Monday study session, talked about their budget for next year. Looks like they're gonna come in about three mils over revenue neutral. They are still waiting on a pay study that they will not have before they have to set the budget, so they're trying to guesstimate what they might. I think they're guesstimating probably low as far as what they're gonna need to really bring up their employees to, anyway. And then they're also getting really close to approval of the new subdivision that's gonna go there off of Princeton, kind of beside Walmart, so that would be it. Some more houses and some more doors. Franklin County needs as many as we can get. And other than that, our next meeting might be a succession on Monday. We'll wait to see if we have anything to discuss.
Thank you.
All right.